I feel like I need to unpack my whole suitcase. I'm going to New York for a few days and I'm like, we're gonna pack a ton of stuff.
I still have the other ones, but they're being packed.
Well, you know this, I was like, what's gonna happen is all the whole freight.
It used to be that's the way this country was.
I feel like I'm gonna wear like my friend's jacket out of there. My big shirt. Right now, she's living in Rhode Island after my late thirty minutes. She has to be here. Yeah, sure. She wanted to go somewhere by train. She's down her whole life now.
Are you missing out?
Oh, man, this is fantastic.
That's good.
We've given her.
I call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, December 26, 2023 at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman Derek Tebow will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind with justice and charity for all so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'd like to ask the clerk if we have any members that are on Zoom or do we just have staff on Zoom?
It appears to be just staff.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
I'm here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
I am here.
Twelve present, three absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. Well, Madam President, as you all note, this is our last meeting of the year, last meeting of our two, this two-year term, and I wanted to say that I have enjoyed working with you all during this past two years. I think we've accomplished some significant things and I'm confident that in the next two years, all of, everybody here is returning, I think. We will continue to work together and move our great city forward. And we do have our inauguration on January 7th, Sunday, and we will all get together again then. You might have seen that Nashville was again recognized as the third best-run city in the United States by Wallet Hub. This measures principally the efficiency of city government. They judge the quality of the services versus the cost per resident, and we came out in the top three among 188 cities, which is due to the efforts of many people. You, certainly the Board of Aldermen, but all our city employees who work very hard to provide quality services every day in the schools, the fire department, Chief Buxton is here, police department, city hall, the library, across the board. I did want to mention the resolution on the agenda, which is going to make Water Street one-way, which is certainly something that we, that I support, and I know it got the endorsement of the committee. The point here is to facilitate the riverfront improvement project, the expanded Renaissance Park, which will take away, add green space but take away some parking in the park, but would add parking along Water Street. Some people do not remember that Water Street used to be one-way, and in fact, when it was built, it was one-way going up the hill as the ordinance proposes it do again. In the, I think in the late eighties, the then Traffic Committee, which was, had part of the responsibilities of the current Infrastructure Committee, the chair was particularly interested in trying to make that two-way. The traffic engineers at the time thought it would be kind of a neutral change, not really change much of anything. But it was made two-way at that time, but it had functions for decades as a one-way street, and I know based upon the recommendations of our traffic people and our committee that it can function that way again very effectively. Finally, I wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year and Happy Holidays. It's a great time to be with our families and I, I hope everybody enjoys the next couple of weeks. And that's all I have. Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of Mayor over here? None? Okay. Recognition period.
June Karen.
I'd like to invite you, June, to come up.
I'd like to thank everything you've done for the city. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming back when we called you back to serve as Support Seven Alton when we needed one. We really appreciate you and all the work and all the time you've spent making this a better city. Yes. Well, it's true. It certainly is true. You have been just a wonderful person to work with. You're always upbeat and happy and I appreciate that. You're my friend and, well, thank you. I appreciate everything you've done to the board. And it's, well, thank you so much. I appreciate it very, very much. Another one standing on the wall here? Clever. I just want to say thank you very much. It was a pleasure. I appreciated the fact that you had confidence in me to ask me to come back to fill in for those eighteen months and being a part of the city, it goes to my heart. I've been here for not as long as Alderman Dowd, but I'm long enough and it's been a pleasure to work with all of you and I wish you good luck. When I'm watching you on TV, I can have my class in front of me. Thank you all. Happy, happy holidays to all of you. Enjoy your candy. See you soon. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
And thank you, Sutti.
Thank you for giving my wife back.
I'd say you're welcome, but I might not really mean it. Okay, we also have a recognition plaque for Alderman Como. Unfortunately, he's not here to receive it this evening, but we do appreciate the work he's done as Alderman over the past term and wish him well in his future endeavors. Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of December 12th and 13th, 2023 to be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons?
Communication has been received from Wayne R. Husband, P.E., Senior Traffic Engineer, regarding ordinance O-23-068, traffic and parking changes on Water Street. Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Administrative Services Director, regarding nine Riverside Police Training and Storage Facility Overview. Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Administrative Service Director, regarding follow-on discussions relative to Water Street legislation, O-23-068.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. There is no one signed up. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award Carharsoft.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve a three-year contract for software subscription service with Carharsoft Technology Corp. for Payment Works, vendor data management software in an amount not to exceed 115,640. First year cost 45,080, includes a one-time onboarding fee of 9,835,280 remains fixed for the three-year subscription period from December 2023 to December 2026. Funding will be through Department 120 Technology Maintenance, Fund 55620 Software Subscription Services.
All heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award Axon Enterprise Inc.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve the lease of 25 TASER 10 Conducted Energy Weapons CEW, including hardware, accessories, warranty, and training with Carharsoft in an amount not to exceed 123,039. Funding will be through Department 150 Police Department, Fund 71407 Firearms.
You've heard that motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding million-dollar contract award Beck &amp; Belucci Inc.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to approve the award of the construction contract for New Hampshire Route 111, eastbound and westbound, over the Merrimack River Bridge Deck rehabilitations to Beck &amp; Belucci of Franklin, New Hampshire in an amount not to exceed 2,180,200. Funding will be through Department 160 Admin/Engineering, Fund 54210 Construction Services/Grant and Capita.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding 2024 Board of Aldermen Calendar of Committee Dates.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to approve the 2024 Board of Aldermen Calendar of Committee Dates.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
None.
Reports of committees? There being no objection, I will declare the report of the November 29th, 2023 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the December 6th and 20th, 2023 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 11th, 2023 Joint Meeting of the Board of Police Commissioners and Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report, report of the December 11th, 2023 Committee on Infrastructure be placed on, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 4th, 2023 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 13th, 2023 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 18th, 2023 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of R-23-178 relative to the supplemental appropriation of 7,400 of fiscal year 2024 unanticipated revenue into Fund Number 2507 Fire Training Facility Rental Fund.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R-23-178 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 23178 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-179 relative to the acceptance of 58,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into Police Grant Activity 2024 Violence Against Women Grant Program into authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to recommend final passage of R-23179.
Motion is your final passage? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 23179 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-180 relative to the supplemental appropriation of 1,015,000 of assigned fund balance into capital project activity, hunt building repairs and improvements.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R-23180 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 23180 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-181 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of 485,000 from the United States Department of the Interior National Park Service Save America's Treasures Grant Program into capital project activity, hunt building repairs and improvements.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move for final passage of R-23181 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 23180 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-184, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2024 relative to the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R-23-184.
Motion is for final passage? Is there discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Kelly.
Just a quick update on what this was. There was an appropriation that was actually rejected by HUD, so we had to reallocate it and we put it back into, I believe it was rental housing assistance in terms of getting them rehabbed.
Alderman Moran?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's, that's fine.
Alderman Moran.
My apologies. I don't want to correct my colleague. It was for homeowners to make repairs. The rental program's being underutilized, but the homeowners program to make repairs is being overutilized and that's why it was recommended to be reallocated back into this program.
As soon as I said it, I knew it was wrong.
You almost had.
Further discussion on that motion?
Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution 23184 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-23-067, no parking on the west side of a section of Elm Street.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-2367.
Motion is for final passage? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Ordinance 2367 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O-23-068, authorizing traffic and parking changes on Water Street.
Alderman Lopez.
As a point of order, should I make a, I have a, intend to make a recommendation to add an amendment? Should I do that first?
Are you amending the Goldenrod copy?
Yes.
No.
But should I recommend final passage and then ask to speak to it and then amend it?
Either order.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend O-2368 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy that you all received in this communication. And I'll speak to it.
Motion is to amend. Alderman, Alderman Lopez.
So, sorry, everybody, for causing more drama about this one piece of ordinance. I was concerned initially because it was a big change, changing the direction of Water Street, and it was coming in at the end of the year, and I wasn't sure I really had time to digest all of the implications, and I know it's a very, very busy and important intersection. And so through the discussion in the Infrastructure Committee, there was a couple of things that I had questions about. I discussed them with Alderman Jettie following the meeting, and then we coordinated with the city departments to confirm. Particularly, my concern is with the turn onto Water Street coming off of the ramp. Water Street has changed over the years. We've built the Rambling House and the brewery there, which do a lot of nighttime business. Harbor Care is across the street from it. It's a medical facility. The Delana's House for Veterans has a number of people that use that door frequently, and Clock Tower has more reasons than ever to be walking up and down that street. So I was concerned with the way that it was originally designed, that we might not have enough inspiration for cars to pause and look at everything that's happening in that intersection, particularly in light of the fact that incoming traffic may not be fully familiar with that now being a one-way turn. So Alderman Jettie aided in communicating to the city staff with me. There's a communication from Director Cummings referencing those communications. The traffic department doesn't have any particular objection to this, and I think it's important to be cautious because of all the traffic that is, the pedestrian traffic on that street with the parking lot there and the different amenities, that we encourage drivers to pause. I do also want to acknowledge that this is a little bit unusual in terms of process. Traditionally, I suppose, we would have had more time to review this. I might have caught it and amended it at the infrastructure level, where we would have another Infrastructure Committee meeting to refer this to, but given that this is the end of the year and I want to make sure that this feature is included in any designs that are finally rolled out. I did speak to Alderman O'Brien. I apologize for the breach in protocol and any kind of insult to his committee that might be inferred, but I wanted to bring this to the full board and make sure that it got its attention.
Okay, the motion is to amend. Further discussion? Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderman Lopez, would you mind giving us the Cliff Notes? It seems like there's a lot of changes in here. Can you just tell us what were the strongest things that you changed?
The primary one is the left-hand turn. There was not a stop sign when you come off Water, when you come off Water Street onto Factory Street, so we will be putting one in. There's a yield sign in the other direction, which is definitely prudent because you'd be turning onto whatever that shape is, it's called the oval, and you'd also, there's an unusual little driveway that is driving in and out of Clock Tower, and because of the, the location of that driveway, there's two sidewalks that pedestrians might be using, so it's good for cars to have a reason to pause and look at what traffic is doing on their way in, but particularly going around the corner onto Factory Street, it adds a stop, so they stop and look before turning.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Alderman Moran.
I just want to be clear on what we're voting for. The Goldenrod copy was, is this the one from West Street from Infrastructure, or is this also from Infrastructure with Alderman Lopez's changes?
I would have to defer to Alderman Lopez.
I don't think the Infrastructure Committee made amendments, but Alderman O'Brien could refresh my memory.
A lot of this that's in the Goldenrod was not discussed at the Committee of Infrastructure. However, looking at it, I don't see anything glowing. The intention is well-intended, and I think it'll satisfy us so that everybody knows. There was another meeting that could have been scheduled for Infrastructure, but not having anything on the docket, we canceled it, yet it could have been included before the end of this calendar year. But if there is a mistake to be made, something that comes up and sees within this Goldenrod, as with all, you know, ordinances, they are fluid, we can make the proper changes. So I'm showing no objection, and would like to see this go forward because the gist of it is a safety matter and it would help out the traffic flow. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. With all due respect to the maker of the motion, I, I'm not going to support it because I believe that with the way that the traffic is, I believe the yield sign, making that right-hand turn should remain there and we should not put a stop sign. So for those reasons, I'm going to vote no.
I'm confused. I thought you said the stop sign was on the left, not on the right.
This, if, if I could, Madam President?
Yes.
This adds a stop sign to both the left and right lane and removes the yield sign.
Okay. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So the, all the Goldenrod copy does is add a stop sign on the left turn.
The right.
The, as it was presented by the Traffic Department and the Planning Department, what was presented to the Infrastructure Committee was, was exactly what the Goldenrod copy provides, except it did not include the additional stop sign on the left, the left turn, but it changed the yield sign that is currently there to a stop sign. And the city engineer, I can't remember if he was there at the meeting or if it was Director Cummings who was speaking on his behalf, but, you know, they felt that, that changing that yield sign to a stop sign was, was, was necessary. You know, I pointed out that, that there was no traffic control provided for the left-hand turn, and, so Director Cummings volunteered to speak to the city engineer about that, and then that's the memo that you got saying that the city engineer was not, did not have an objection to adding a stop sign on the left side. I spoke to the city engineer myself. He was, he told me that, that he and the traffic engineer, Mr. Husband and Director Futter, were adamant that the yield sign needed to be changed to a stop sign because it's, there's pedestrian crossway there, and they felt that it was necessary to stop the traffic to protect the pedestrians. So that, that was already in there when it came to the Infrastructure Committee, and all that the Goldenrod copy does is add the stop sign on the left turn because there was no, you know, the, as it was presented to the Infrastructure Committee, there was no traffic control provided for the left turn, which I think is even more important than the stop sign on the right side. So what the Goldenrod copy does, you know, the original motion provided for a stop sign on the right turn, changing the yield to a right, to a stop sign, and what the Goldenrod copy does is add a stop sign on the left-hand turn. So if, so, you know, if, if you don't think the stop sign on the right should be changed to a yield, you know, that would, you know, justify opposition to- you know, that would, you know, justify opposition to the, the motion after the, not the golden rod copy, but the original motion.
Thank you for clarifying, clarifying that. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O twenty-three sixty-eight, as amended.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm sorry, Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I'd like to further amend by replacing the stop sign on the right-hand turn to a yield sign.
Okay, discussion on that.
And I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Lopez, I keep calling you Alderman Lopez. Alderman Clemmons, sorry.
That's okay. I, I, thank you. So right now, the way that the traffic pattern is, there's a yield sign there now. I, I happen to be of the opinion that it works very well. When you come up to it, if there's a pedestrian, you, you stop and you let them go. Most of the time, there's not a pedestrian, and you can just keep the flow of traffic going. I would prefer to have it stay that way, and therefore, I'm making this amendment.
I'll let Alderman Lopez since he made more of the.
Right. My amendment was mostly the left-hand side, but I would just testify, as a frequent pedestrian over there, they do not always yield. Coming up over that particularly angled overpass, I don't think the drivers necessarily even register everything that's happening. I think a stop sign is a little bit more immediately recognized, particularly it'd be more consistent with the other stop sign. I, I think that intersection needs a lot of work, and I think that, that's one of the, the benefits of switching this to a one-way, is reducing the number of different directions that drivers have to be looking in. But I, I also think that particularly the way that, that intersection is angled, it would be better if it was a stop sign on both sides.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I agree with the motion right now. I feel that having it as a yield now would open the door to put a stop sign there later if we found that needed. Putting in the stop sign first, very unlikely we'll take that stop sign down. So I'm willing to give the yield a try, and then we can revisit it. And we put up stop signs quite a bit, and I think that's, that's easy enough to do. So I'd rather try it with the yield first and then resort to a stop sign instead of just defaulting straight to the stop sign.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, this is going to be a pretty big change for, for people that live in this area and people that go down it. I personally feel, I don't know if I, I agree with the fact that we shouldn't put a stop sign up there instead. I probably would err on the caution of safety, but I just think if this was me, at the last, you know, it seems like we're trying to push this through, which probably should have went through another Infrastructure Committee, in my opinion, because I think it's a big change, but I don't think I would agree with this amendment, so.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm, I'm starting to get a little confused, and I, I thought I understood it. Now I'm, I'm confused. The, the yield sign, I, I'm looking at it here. The yield sign is coming off of Water Street and taking a right onto Factory Street, where, where it's going to go into Walnut. And the stop sign would be on the same street, but if you're going to the left onto that, then I do have a comment. Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I was okay. Is there going to be confusion having a yield sign and a stop sign at the same intersection? I, right now, it's a two-way, but people are going to be confused. And, and I'm afraid that putting one on one side and one on the other is going to confuse people. I would prefer it to be just a stop sign, period, on both sides. They're not going to understand whether they need to stop or yield. Right now, there's not supposed to be a left onto Factory, and I can tell you, people do not go around the Walnut Rotary to park onto Factory Street. They take that left to get to the High Street Parking Lot and, and so on. So they're probably barely stopping now, and there are two cross, crosswalks there. One across Factory Street and one across Water Street. So personally, I would prefer not to confuse people, just have a stop sign on both, on both sides. So just my opinion. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment?
Roll call.
Roll call has been requested. The clerk called the roll.
Excuse me, I want, one clarification. We're doing the, we're doing the amendment, the second amendment, on this, on the stop sign and the yield sign. Is that correct, or what are we voting on?
We're voting on a stop sign on the left and a yield sign to the right. Yes. Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, point of order. Alderman Clemmons's motion to amend provides for a stop sign on the right. Excuse me, a yield sign, continuing the yield sign that is currently there. The, the ordinance, as proposed, changes that yield sign to a stop sign. Alderman Clemmons's motion would keep it as a yield sign as it is now. His motion does not affect the stop sign on the left side, the left turn side. So, so right now, you know, the, the left turn is prohibited by no left turns. But when it becomes one-way, there'll be a left-turn lane on the left side and a right-turn lane on the right side. So the first motion that Alderman Lopez made was to add a stop sign on the left side so that people making a left turn would stop before they go in onto Factory Street. And so, after his motion passed, it provides for a stop sign on the left side and on, and on the right side. Alderman Clemmons wants to keep the, the yield sign on the right side, not change it to a stop sign, but leave it as a yield sign. So what we're voting on now is whether we keep it as a yield sign or change it to a stop sign.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. We're really close to rolling out the whiteboard here, but. I just want to make sure if I say yes or no. If I say yes, then I'm, then I'm saying okay to a stop sign and a yield sign. And a no is two stop signs.
If you say yes right now, you're going to approve the yield sign.
Correct.
Yes. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. And maybe this is a question through you to either Alderman Lopez or Alderman Jettie. But, so when it was discussed with the city, because we don't have anybody on the city that can talk to this, right? The traffic engineer isn't here, or anybody that could actually speak to this, right? I'm assuming.
Director Cummings.
He's not really the traffic engineer, but.
And Director Sullivan.
I mean, I guess they could speak to it. I'm just curious, like, when you guys discussed this, was both options discussed? And they were more for the two stop signs or, did they want the stop sign and the, and the yield? Like, what did the city engineer think was the best solution? I'm assuming that the two stop signs.
Alderman Jettie.
This discussion did not occur at the, in the Infrastructure Committee because the traffic engineer and the city engineer neither, I don't think either, either one was there. I spoke to the city engineer. He told me that he and the traffic engineer and Director Fotur felt that the yield sign that is currently there was not sufficient, that because of the changes in the left turn and the right turn, that a stop sign would be necessary. I think he mentioned something that Alderman Cleve mentioned, is about the curve coming up, and that they, they felt that a stop sign was necessary. I, you know, I said, it's been a yield sign without any problem that I'm aware of. And he said, he agreed that there has, there have been, he's not aware of any accidents or any problems with it as a yield sign. But he felt, he said that he and the traffic engineer and Director Fotur felt that with these changes, that a stop sign would be necessary. He also mentioned the confusion of having a, a yield sign on one side and a stop sign on the other side. So he said they want two stop signs.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. This may be a question through you to the maker of the motion. Preserving the yield sign as it is currently, that preserves the traffic pattern as it sits tonight. Is that correct?
No.
At least turning right onto, off of Water Street.
Correct.
And the major change coming is the, is getting rid of traffic coming down Water Street and adding that left turn onto Factory.
Correct.
Thank you.
You bet. Further discussion? Was a roll call requested? Yes. The clerk called the roll, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Cleve.
No.
Alderman Moran.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan. Alderman Senate.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderwoman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Three ayes, ten nays.
That motion fails, so we're back to Alderman Clemmons' motion to, we've already passed the motion to amend. So we're on, we're ready for final passage. Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O twenty-three zero-six-eight, as amended.
Motion's already been made? The motion's already been made, yes.
I just figured every state.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is for final passage as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. And ordinance twenty-three sixty-eight is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions?
None.
New business ordinances?
None.
Period for general public comment? None. Remarks by members of the board? I'll start over here. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I probably would like to join the throngs. And congratulations to Alderwoman June Karen for her time with us on the board. Again, she stepped up to the plate. The first time as to be an Alderman. I think most of us here know the long term that she had in the Park and Rec Department, and dedicated many years of service. And for her to come back again when we needed her, I thank her very much. And she was definitely somebody that I enjoyed serving with on the board. I particularly liked the soup that she would bring occasionally, you know. And I know she will be missed by members of the board, but I'll still see her sociably around. And the second thing is to Alderman Como. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight with us, but he was my clerk on Infrastructure. And for him to sneak out the door, you know, I'm sorry that he had lost the, the election. But when he served as my clerk, he was, I admired his diligence. He was very good in what he did. And I hope perhaps, maybe in the future, he may decide to seek public office again at some futuristic point. So I'd like to thank him, and again, I would like to wish him all the best in his new endeavors and everything, so. And the final thing is, we went through Christmas. Santa Claus was very good to the O'Brien clan. So now we're faced with the new year, and I wish everybody in the city all the best in the new year, that all the blessings from our good Lord will come back to you, and that you have a wonderful 2024. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to also echo the comments of my colleague on June Karen. It was a pleasure and an honor to serve with her over the past couple of years, not only here, but also on the Budget Committee. And then also to Alderman Como, I hope that he does come back and serve the city, either in elected position or appointed position, depending on, on, kind of where things go for him. But it was an honor to, to serve with him as well, and I appreciated his viewpoint on many things. Some stories that I noticed over the past couple of days that I wanted to bring up in my public comments. Congratulations to Ellie Lively. She's a fifth grader at Bicentennial. She was voted on by her peers in New Hampshire, other fifth graders. She is New Hampshire's kid governor.
Yay.
And to Jack Rugg, he is a fifth grader at St. Christopher's here in Nashua. He was elected as one of the six executive counselors here in New Hampshire as well. So congratulations to those two students, kind of a nice pat on the back for some up-and-coming politicians here in our city. And finally, I, I did read this cool story, but there's a company here in Nashville called Geophysical Survey Systems, and they invented a product called the Flex NH. And it won the 2023 Product of the Year by the New Hampshire Tech Alliance. So what this product does is it streamlines inspecting concrete on the age of different concrete buildings or whatnot. But hats off to them for a cool honor. So that's it. Happy New Year. We have three hundred and, what is it, three hundred and sixty-five days? Is that what you get in a year? In front of us, so we'll make the most of it.
It's three hundred and sixty-six, actually.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. And, and I, I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Lively on becoming the kid governor. This is the second time Nashua has had a kid governor. The very first year was also a Nashua resident. And if you go on to the state's website and you look at the kid governor, and I'm blanking on her name at the moment, you will see that she is with two greyhounds, and they're my greyhounds. She, she conducted a meeting here in City Hall. So she was the first kid governor, and I was very happy to, to help her along. I also want to wish everybody a happy and safe New Year, and I know Kwanzaa's coming up, so a happy Kwanzaa. And I too want to thank June for all the support and having stepped up. But I would be remiss to say that she was the only one who stepped up. Alderman Senate also stepped up at that time, too, and we had a, kind of a runoff, June won. But I appreciate that Alderman Senate ran again and this time got the seat. So I want to thank him for that. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for the last two years, serving with all of you. It has been wonderful, and I'm looking forward to another two years. And Alderman Como, he has one more chance to show. I believe we have a finance committee, and he is the clerk of finance. So don't make me have to clerk, sit in that seat, and I look forward to saying goodbye to you then. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I, again, thank you to Alderwoman Karen for her years of service. Hopefully, no one from Ward Seven resigns again, or an at-large that needs reappointment. So a well-known Alderman to be taking up the reins. I'm sure her husband would not appreciate that again. Also, thank you to Alderman Como for the last two years. Coming into this, I would not have thought that I would have agreed with him as many times as he voted along the lines of my vote, I think, over ninety percent. So it does go to show that once you're here and you actually represent the people of Nashua, that we can always find common ground, and I appreciated that about my colleague from Ward Six. Happy Kwanzaa. Today, I believe, is the first day of Kwanzaa. And Happy New Years to everyone in the city. And I'm not, I, I don't, do I need to be sworn in for the, because I'm, I already have, I'm maybe through you to Attorney Bolton, because I have tickets to Pete Davidson. I might not be able to make.
We'll take care of.
Okay.
The tickets, you mean?
I know Attorney Bolton looks forward to swearing people in. I think that's his favorite part of his job. All right. Thank you all, and I look forward to the next two years.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to thank Attorney Bolton for putting up with all the people who've sworn in him over the years. And just per, per my earlier colleague's comment, this is a weird year, actually. There's three hundred and sixty-six, because this is a leap year. Regarding Kwanzaa at Soul Sisters, tomorrow at six, they'll be celebrating Kwanzaa, so feel free to stop by. And I wanted to thank everybody for kind of indulging my amendment.
And I wanted to thank everybody for kind of indulging my amendment tonight. Like I said, that intersection, we lost someone there a couple of years ago, and I just wouldn't want to see anything like that happening again. It's a little bit of a crazy intersection, only because, or not just because of the sidewalks that were discussed, but because of the driveway that goes into Clock Tower, it actually creates two sidewalks on that one side, so it's a little bit of a unique feature, and so I appreciate everybody's indulgence as well as the support of city staff. I want to thank everybody who supported the holidays for Veterans fundraiser. I know Alderman O'Brien won the fifty-fifty raffle, and he graciously donated that, so much appreciated. We decorated Delana's house, there's some decorations that were even contributed by the mayor's office, and it's important to help everybody through the holidays, to enjoy those holidays. I know for many, holidays are a tough time. I know a couple of members of this board who have lost people, and I want to express my condolences to Kendra Smith on the loss of her grandmother as well. And being able to celebrate it with people and being able to feel connected to people is very, very important, so it's not just a Christmas party, it's an opportunity to engage people who really need that sense of belonging. So, thank you all for supporting that, and also thank you to my fellow aldermen who attended the longest night vigil. Alderman Tebow, Alderman Govea, your presence was very much appreciated. Again, when we talk about the holidays and the joy and the light, Christmas is positioned at this time of year particularly because it's very dark, it's a long night. We just passed the winter solstice, the days are going to be getting longer and brighter again, so we can all celebrate, but coming together for those kind of causes means a lot for the people who participated, so thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So, I've known June Karen a long time. When I was in law school, I was fortunate enough to get a summer work-study job, working for the city attorney, who was Arthur Gormley at the time, and in that capacity, I met June, who was working in the Park Recreation Department, I think she was right out of high school, is still not in high school, I'm not sure, but, so, I wish her well, and Alderman Como, I have not known him as long, but I think he represented his constituents very well, and I wish him well in his future. And I would like to say, in the language of my people, Joyeux Noël et une bonne heureuse année et le paradis à la fin de tes jours, which means Merry Christmas, a good and happy New Year, and paradise at the end of your days, to which my father would respond, thank you very much, but I am in no hurry.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to wish Alderwoman Karen all the best, and thank her for her stepping up earlier, two years ago, when the vacancy took place, and then I want to thank Alderman Como for serving as well. I think he did a fine job for Ward Six, and he will be missed, and I want to wish everybody else a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying how pleasantly surprised I was to see Alderman Karen here. I feel like we say goodbye, and then she just keeps coming back. I never got the soup that we were talking about, so I'm going to have to call her on that one. But echoing so many of the sentiments of the rest of the colleagues in the room here, it's just been an incredible year, so, working with all of you, we've done some really good work for the city, and I know that we have a lot on the horizon for 2024. To that end, I was sad to miss the longest night vigil, but I was at the Energy and Environment Committee, we were working hard on the Sustainability Plan, that'll be coming to the board briefly on the ninth of January, so if you guys have any interest in kind of knowing what's going on, feel free to reach out to me or the committee, we can give you a little bit of a primer before we come up here, but that'll just be a preview. And then, you know, I know that we're doing some really good work with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that will be a labor of love that I know will be important for 2024. Happy Kwanzaa, and did I miss anything else? That's it, thank you.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to thank Alderman Como and Alderman Karen for their dedication to the board and to the city, and for all their hard work and long hours here with the rest of us, and then just a Happy and Healthy New Year to everybody.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to echo the thanks and congratulations to Alderman Karen for her years upon years upon years of service to the city of Nashua. I'm one of the relative newcomers to Ward Seven, having only been there seven or eight years, and obviously, short of six months, June has always been my alderman. And so, as I said, my first night here, I recognize that I have some very large shoes to fill, and certainly hope that I'm up to the task, and I wouldn't be surprised if I find myself asking her for some advice if I run into her at the grocery store. Best wishes to Alderman Como, could not be here tonight, but, you know, certainly worth thanking anybody who gives up two years of their lives to sit in this chamber. Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year to everybody throughout Nashua. Please celebrate responsibly, be there for the first of 2024, and that's all I've got.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. So I go way back with June Karen. My dad graduated high school with her and Pete, but of course, I didn't know her until this year, or the last year. She's been a great seatmate, I'm sure, well, we're going to change seats anyway, but she's been a great seatmate, having her here and having her expertise, and giving me advice over the last year and a half has been fantastic. Like Alderwoman Kelly, I never got soup or goutte or anything good, except a couple of chocolates here and there, but I would have really liked to have that goutte, being a good French person. I also want to thank Tom Alderman Lopez for the longest night vigil. It was well done, and it was extremely cold that night, and I think that kind of highlights, you know, I had said, I think I had said to someone, man, it's so cold, I wish it was like the other day, when it was like fifty or sixty, but that doesn't really bring home the point of having to be out all night in severely cold weather, so that really hit home. How Alderman Lopez held a microphone with his bare hand for as long as he did, I don't understand, because he wasn't even wavering.
It just froze in this shape.
Maybe he was heated or something, but it was cold, and I just want to recognize that, along with Alderman Govea, Alderman Senate was there as well, and I think it was well done by Alderman Lopez. Happy Kwanzaa. You know, I'm going to let Alderman Jettie speak in my people's words, so I'm not going to try any French, but I'm looking forward, you know, the last two years have been great, and I really think the next two years can be even better. Looking forward to seeing more of Alderman Senate and Alderman Timmison in the new year, and I think the city can do a lot of great things, and I think we in here can do a lot of the great things, we can block out the noise and just do the work of the city, the work of our constituents, and along with the Nashua's longest-serving mayor, really do some stuff here that's going to be good for the people we serve, so I'm really looking forward to it. Happy New Year to everybody in here, and I can't wait to start work in 2024. Thank you.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to thank Alderwoman Karen. We got to be very close in the last couple of years, I didn't know her that well, but when I did get to know her, I wanted to be wherever she was, and she was around a lot of things and a lot of places, and she's fantastic, and I'm not going to mention soup, but, yeah, okay, she's going to be well missed. Also, I like to always say that we are one of the best cities in the country, even though we came in third this time, we will be first the next time, and it's a result of all of you guys sitting around this horseshoe, including the mayor. We can't ask for a better city, so I'm really proud that we came in third next time first. Also, I'd like to say Happy Kwanzaa. Kwanzaa starts today, and January first. It is not a religious holiday, just so you know, it's an African-American culture thing, and I don't want to go through all the, all seven days and what me, but it starts today and on January first. And I'd like to also say, around this horseshoe this year, we had a lot of loss. I lost my sister, Alderman Sullivan, just lost a family member, I, most of you lost some family members this year, and it's been a very hard year for all of us that lost family members, and, you know, my condolences go out to each and every one of us that lost a family member this year and last year as well, so, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone here, and those who aren't here tonight, like Alderman Como, for all the work you've done this year. I appreciate working with each one of you. We may not agree on everything, but I certainly respect your view and your opinions, and I hope going forward that remains the same. Also, I want to wish everyone a Happy Kwanzaa and a Happy New Year. Thank you. Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah, there's no infrastructure coming up this week, the agenda was kind of light, so enjoy the New Year's.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make the motion that the December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn at eight thirty-two PM. Thank you, everyone.